Good evening, everybody. Please join me in standing for the pledge.
Pledge early.
I'd like to observe a moment of silence tonight for the following individuals. Patrick Keegan, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Helen Martin, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Michael Chikreski, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kathleen Letoka, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Anthony Davis, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And all of those affected by the Georgia shooting last week. Thank you. A couple of presentations this evening. The first one is a proclamation for maintenance and operations. The appearance of our buildings and grounds has a significant impact on the environment for suitable learning for our students, working conditions for district employees, and is a sense of pride for our community. The maintenance and operations department employees contribute to the school, family, and community by upholding professional work standards, receiving timely training, and approaching all tasks in a strong collective spirit of teamwork, which contributes to the overall work effectiveness. They exhibit diligence, patience, and professionalism in adjusting to new challenges and situations that occur in our school buildings and grounds. To honor the maintenance and operations department employees of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Michael Merzio, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare the week of September ninth, two thousand twenty-four through September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four as Maintenance and Operations Appreciation Week to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. So do I have a motion to accept that this week? Mr. Crabtree, Ms. Kramer, all those in favor? Ms. Do we have any maids here? Next up, we have a presentation for Book Van Gogh.
Yeah, so Book Van Gogh, it's a remarkable initiative. It was spearheaded by a former teacher, Susan Straub. It provides free books to students and families throughout the community. The program's positive impact on our community has been clear from the start. Initially, the books at the district office were stored on a rolling cart with plastic bins for different reading levels, and there's actually a rolling cart over here right now. So this past year, the technology education teachers Alexis Williams, who is back here, and Jason Fabian, is Jason here? Along with their students undertook a special project, constructing bookshelves for the district office. So this is one of the bookshelves over there. These new shelves not only enhance the organization of the books, but also highlight their significance through beautifully crafted display units. Tonight, we proudly recognize the creativity and dedication of both our students and teachers. Special congratulations go to twelve graders Aubrey Coyle, Aubrey, raise your hand there, and Edis Omanovich, Edis. And they each played a key role in these impressive bookshelves. Our heartfelt thanks and congratulations also extend to Sue Straub, the visionary founder of Book Van Gogh. So thank you.
Thank you for your work on that, and these bookshelves really are beautiful. So thank you all. Thank you.
Yes, Susan. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Thank you for everything with this. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Bidnarsky here for his athletics presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm here tonight to kind of give you an update of where we are with the athletic department. I was here in June to talk a little bit about our new vision, our motto and guiding values. To my right, I have Dr. Matt Davidson, who is the president of Excellence with Integrity, who has been the leader of our committee with his guidance. And to my left, who came here tonight, is Bill Craig, who is a parent in the district and also a highly respected official in the area. He just came tonight, so I brought him up too as well. He's been a huge part of our committee. So last week, we were able to get with the, have a coaches meeting and kind of deliver this, and we'll talk a little bit about. Matt will take it in a little bit and talk about what he did with the coaches. But over the summer, where we're at now is the delivery and getting our message out and what we, where we want CNS Athletics to go. So I was able over the summer to work with some coaches and athletes and put together this video. So I'll start with this, so you can get a little groundwork before we move forward.
Excited to share with you the results of an extensive collaborative process involving administrators, coaches, community members representing the district. With the guy, the president of Excellence with Integrity Institute, we have developed a new motto, vision, and set of guiding values for CNS Athletics. This collective builds a passion for CNS Athletics and has shined a bright air that will bring exceptional results in athletics and beyond.
Our vision and promise is this: Developing excellence, integrity, unity, resilience, and leadership through athletics in the preparation for life. We believe that with this unifying guidepost, our student athletes here in North Syracuse will not only have success in their athletic endeavors, but most importantly, in their lives.
To accomplish this vision, we have a shared commitment to our guiding values. Commit to excellence, act with integrity, build unity, be resilient, and lead the way. This is our way, the North Star way.
For bringing out the best in ourselves and each other, no matter our circumstances, ability, or role. We value our growth on the journey as much as the goals we pursue.
Next, act with integrity. We put our guiding values in action everywhere, all the time. We own it and make things right when we fail, make mistakes, or fall short of our guiding values.
Build unity. We cultivate a spirit of camaraderie, community, and collective commitment amongst teammates.
We develop pride and unity in our school and community by how we compete and conduct ourselves.
We show optimism, patience, flexibility, and responsibility in the face of difficulties and adversities.
We support one another, reaching out when needed, and finding hope in our ability to hold fast and emerge stronger from our hardships.
Our mom. However, it encompasses everything that we strive to be: Live the North Star way. When we say live the North Star way, those words carry the weight of our actions as student athletes. Co- alumni, and anyone else that chooses to proudly wear the star and seeks to live values.
But we lead in our role always to add value to the shared goals and collective good of the team. We compete in a way that respects the game, our teammates, our opponents, coaches, officials, spectators, and our loyal North Star fans.
We are proud. Live the North Star way.
Okay, not sure why the sound was doing that, but as you get, first, I'd like to thank the coaches and athletes in our committee for helping put that together. As you can see, this is where we're heading, and now it's buying or getting everybody to buy in. And so I wanted to show this to you tonight, and now we're going to get it out to the teams, the community, and the public. And so we can get everybody on board of what we want CNS Athletics to be and represent. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Matt to share some of the stuffs he has worked with our coaches and the committee with.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. Wanted to just unpack a few of the, quickly, some of the things that are behind the work of the committee and what we've put in place for you here at the district. In our work, this is the model that we're driving after. We're not a marketing company. We actually work on the development of character and culture. And what we would argue is leader shape culture. Culture shapes or corrupts character, and it's the character that leads to that highest level of excellence that you can achieve. The documents that we've put together allow you to really think about how to shape that culture, not only at the district leadership level, but also at the coach level. In the work of the committee, what we talked about is to live and lead our way, we had to first define it. And that's really what those mission documents are all about. So just a little unpacking here, you have several pieces in the handouts that are part of what we would consider to be a comprehensive approach to drive the development of culture forward. That vision and promise gives that aspirational goal, the tangible benefit that we're trying to go after. So while it's simple and lofty, it is something that you're always aspiring to. So the development of those five core values through athletics as preparation for life. That really is the handshake, that whether you go on to play in college or don't, whether you play for one year or longer, we develop these as preparation for life. Those core values aren't just chosen from a bag. Those are really integrally connected to a grounded theory about how character and culture develops that we've been working on for the past thirty years. So excellence, integrity, teamwork, self-work. Excellence, integrity, intrapersonal, interpersonal is what we see as being needed. As the group worked together around that grounded theory, these were the five that really emerged as both needed for what the coaches and members of the committee thought were important and are developed from it. We took that and crafted it into a touchstone. In books like Good to Great, they talk about an organizational touchstone as the operational values put into action. Those "we" statements are really, really important because it's not about each person trying to develop themselves in a vacuum. We, we as a team, we as a district, we as coaches. So those "we" statements are what really challenge us to collectively aspire for that. These outcomes and practices are probably, in my mind, some of the most important things to go beyond marketing, to actually have outcomes based on your intervention. So on the one hand, it's good to have those values. Second, to have that touchstone. But these are the learning objectives. What is it that students will be able to do? What do we mean by excellence? What do we mean by integrity? In order for them to do that, we need coaches who shape a kind of culture. And so those coaching practices really give you an idea of what is it we're going to do better or differently to see these kinds of outcomes in students. Many times, if you just get a marketing company, you've got some nice slogans, but you really don't have the outcomes that you can look at. Really, really important for training, for accountability, and for continuously measuring your aspirational vision. Clarity of expectations is the first piece in our grounded theory. What we talk about are four things needed to shape culture: habit, accountability, and mindset. We think about this more as strength and conditioning for culture. In our work with Power Four or Five Athletic Departments, when we're working with them, we're thinking about this as strength and conditioning. It's not just enough to talk about these things. You actually have to practice them. And so the habits, accountability, and mindset are what we were really trying to work on moving forward. On September second, we had a first rollout meeting with coaches, and we were introducing them to the work that their colleagues had done in the committee. But we wanted to make sure that they had some tools for shaping the habits in their culture. These are five culture-shaping tools that we have developed in our work. What is a tool? A more intentional, efficient, and consistent way to do a job. So the Team Compact, for example, is a tool that helps them actually shape the norms within their team. What are we going to do? What are we not going to do? If we're looking to go undefeated, and we had a great year last year, you may have different expectations than if we have an entirely new team. The Leader to Detractor Continuum, helping those coaches to really get expectations for on the field, off the field. What's it look like if you're on the bench? What's it look like if you're a starter? That color word number story is a tool that we've used very effectively with teams to check in on the mental health and the intensity. In high-performing environments, they balance demandiness and responsiveness. So when you get in the habit of asking your team members, what's your number on a scale of one to ten? If you show up for practice and you got a team full of fours and fives, you have a way of responding and understanding where they are to make adjustments. And then finally, the Integrity in Action Checklist was the other tool that we put in their box. We think about this as sort of like sport visualization on the moral side. As you're thinking about the decisions that you want young people to put into action on and off the field, the Integrity in Action Checklist gives them some tests to look through. And if they're not answering in the affirmative, then we want them to check down. So if you wouldn't want it on the front page of the paper, if it's not something you'll feel proud about in the long term, we're taking them through some of those moral questions so that they can make some decisions to check down if things aren't right. So those five tools are part of what we put in the toolbox so that we didn't simply give the coaches a new vision, new mission. Great, this stuff will come and go. We really wanted them to see there's going to be a best-practice approach to really giving them state-of-the-art tools for shaping character and culture. And then finally, this is just some of the next steps. The mission-vision articulation is the first piece. But in our lingo, what we say is it's a continuous process of discovering or recovering intentionality. There's a whole bunch of things that you already have in place or that you're already doing. And Tim has already begun an audit of all those different things to make sure that this is part of ongoing parent education and communication. The video becomes very, very important because how do you convey to everybody, every parent, every student athlete, what it is? The student-athlete leadership development. You're already doing some of that, but now you can connect it to the North Star way, those core values. The best-practice community of support, that's part of what we were trying to do on September second. It's part of what we'll come back to work on on the Professional Development Day in November. And this score, I would say, based on the work that we've done across the country, I think you're really in a state-of-the-art sort of strength and conditioning for culture approach. Connecting the board's standards, we have those board standards that apply to coaches, making the connection between the coaching expectations and the North Star way. It's just aligning and pulling everything together. And then finally, you know, the connection of the evaluation process for teams, coaches, and overall athletics. That's something we've been doing with college coaches across the country. Probably our longest-standing customer is Stanford Athletics. Where, you know, we're not just talking about these aspirational visions. We're actually looking at a team-by-team basis. So some of the ways in which, as you go from phase one, the good work of the committee in the spring, moving forward, these are the, some of the tools and opportunities for you to continue to integrate. And then we can just play a supporting role as you need. You know, we've got the Professional Development Day, but when you guys feel like you've, you know, taken the expertise that we've got, you're integrated, you, we can support in as little or as big a way as you have in mind.
Thank you. Any questions?
Comments? I do. Well, a couple, maybe more comments, because I was reading this yesterday, and it looked wonderful on print and paper. So I thank you for bringing it to life. You obviously have a passion with what you do, and I'm really a big fan of this. I mean, our athletics, athletics in any school these days, especially one this size, becomes the face of the school, good or bad. And so we want that to be good. And so I think this is fantastic. When you talked about the board standards quickly, you looked, we're talking about this board. So I'm assuming we can align, we align this with our writer-together strategic plan. So, correct? Yeah, okay, thanks. Somewhere in here, there's a question, though. You talked about buy-in. Tell me what that looks like. I can't imagine anybody not buying into this because there's nothing not positive here. But what is, how does that process look? Any?
A couple thoughts. I think it's more like strength and conditioning for culture. You have a goal and you have an aspiration, but you have to do the hard work. I think the difference when you have an organizational touchstone aligned with your core values and a committee of folks who have, who have put forth those "we" statements, it makes it much, much harder for an individual person to simply say, well, I do it my way. So that culture buy-in process, I think, part of what looks like resistance is often a lack of clarity about what to do better or differently. So I think part of what's really, really important are those outcomes defined. What do we want student athletes to be able to do? What are we asking coaches to do? Lots of different kinds of coaches. But within those expectations, there are things that are off the board, and there are things that are clearly within bounds. So I think it's a slow, deliberate, intentional process of continuously defining and going back and reflecting on what we're doing. So I think that buy-in, there are no fast abs. Generally speaking, what we see is three to five years for true culture transformation. But what it's really going to help you do is in terms of hiring, in terms of bringing in new coaches, helping parents to understand what our way is. So the buy-in, I think, is an intentional process, but no, no quick abs.
Well, no, thank you. That's... I, this will be an odd question, but you're a ref, ref with us in the...
I don't know about that.
No, just for the whole, in section three?
Yes, I do, section three. I've also refereed.
Oh. So I've never met you, but we had a brief conversation walking in, and you were right. You were bright, while you were bright and cheering, kind of perked up my day, not even knowing you, and I want to thank you for that. I just, what do you see when you're around, just have you run into other schools that are adopting something like this? I just, and I'd love down the road, before I forget, you know, if you could, just a brief update next year or whatever, just to see how. I know it's a work in progress. Sounds like you said three to five before you really integrate it fully, but I'd love to hear updates on this as we go.
My opinion, my opinion is, is that scholastically, our district will be at the tip of the spear by implementing a program like this. And I think most, if not all of your other schools in this area and in New York State will eventually want to mirror what we're doing here. As a parent, as an ex-athlete, as a- As a parent, as an ex athlete, as a, as an official, I think too many times that we are evaluated. Athletics is evaluated by wins and losses. What I'm encouraged and why I'm so glad that Tim asked me to be on board is we're also going to be able to evaluate our student athletes, our coaches, our booster clubs, our alumni by what type of citizens they are. And I think the core values, the guiding values that we're going to be rolling out here are going to transit, transition for our student athletes into their collegiate career, into their professional careers, and also to how they interact with their children as a parent and of athletes in the future. Or, and, and, and the great thing about this, and I think that it translates to our hallways also. A lot of these folks are leaders in our, in our schools. And if they're leading and living the North Star way, it will trickle into our hallways. And that's the encouraging thing. And that's the, I mean, that's the utopia that I live in, that I'm hoping sees. I mean, I'm a, I'm a Florida State graduate. I can be anywhere in the country and I see someone from Florida State. And basically they go, go Knowles and we say, with seminal pride. And I'm looking for something like that, maybe 10 years down the line with this program, with the North Stars.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
So looking through that lens, how far ahead are we compared to our neighboring schools? Has anyone else done anything remotely close to what we're looking, doing here?
Not that I'm aware.
Yeah. So we do, our institute is locally based, but we've done work really the last 30 years in character and culture. And I would say we've made precious little progress, in part because what we, people work on is also in the culture of sport. So we talk about big picture questions about sportsmanship and things related to that. What we're really talking about is shaping sport team culture. And, and in our work, what we're trying to do nationally with high schools, with organizations like the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association, Women's Basketball Coaches Association. When we're connected with these national organizations, I see very, very few systematic efforts like this. This is much more along the lines of the work that we have done at Lemoine, at Syracuse, at Fairfield, at, you know, Stanford, at Michigan State. So I think this is probably in terms of strength and conditioning for sport team culture. This is, I would say state of the art. And I don't, I'm not aware of any other ones that we've worked on.
That's great. Like Paul said, there's nothing negative about this and there's no doubt that we're going to, we're going to nail this and people are going to want to follow. Oh, sure.
Real quick. First of all, this is amazing. Like you guys clearly worked hard on this and thank you for presenting it. I know you said it's going to take several years, obviously to get going with it. Starting this year, I mean, is there any expectation? Like I'm sure the coaches have read this, but are the athletes supposed to? Is there anything we're doing? I'm just curious. No pressure.
Yeah. Like I said, with the video, that's going to come out and then, and then the athletes will see it. So it's a slow process, but we're getting there. Yeah. Yeah.
So I have a couple of things. So one, I'm super excited for this. Being a CNS athlete my whole life and then going to the games after I graduated. Over the past few years, I want to say that CNS was losing their culture, but I would say we were, we weren't seeing it as clearly as we were before. I mean, and now with this, I just feel like we just putting brand new glasses on and we can see where we're going. And I'm super excited to have you here because I've watched dozens of games you've wrapped. And I can, I can go along with what Mr. Crabtree says, we do have one of the best here. But you're going to see what happens firsthand because you, you've been watching it for so long on the court and on the diamond from the officiating standpoint. So you're going to know right away when you, when this start, when this stuff starts kicking in. So thank you so much for all your work and, and good job bringing a ref here too. Decided for what happens in basketball season. But no, so there's a, there's a question going on. It kind of goes back to my question I asked you before was if I'm an athlete trying out and I don't make the team, how, where, where does this get introduced along the way? Do you, does it get introduced at tryouts? Does it get introduced in the school as a whole? Does it get like where, how do students get, get involved in this? Even if they want to be an athlete with CNS, but they don't, they can't get in there, you know?
So Ms. Hill is also on the committee and I believe she has some plans to utilize some of this within the building as well. The timing's perfect too, with the renovation, because we plan to have visual awareness of this throughout the building, especially in the athletic areas, which all students will see. In, because they all take phys ed and, and down there. So to answer your question, of course, once made the team, yes, but I think also tying this into the building as well as the PE classes and, and stuff like that.
So important that I, I don't want people to think, oh, this is just like, I don't want kids to think this is just for athletes. I, I don't need to act this way. I'm not a, you know, like, and that's what I was talking about with like, kind of losing sight of what it means to be a North Star is, is athletics has always had that culture, you know? But I felt like CNS, like I, I'd like to be, like he said, like I, I went to St. Bonaventure my freshman year. I only went there my freshman year. But no matter where I go, if it's, if I see somebody wearing a Bana's, I could be in, down in Florida, it's like go Bana's and go Bana's. And we'll have a 20 minute conversation and I only went there one year, you know? So, so I want to see a North Star sweatshirt at the fair, or I want to see a North Star sweatshirt in, in Pennsylvania and be like, hey, like you want, you were wearing that, like let's, let's chop it up. Let's have a conversation. And, and I think this is a really good step in the, in, in the right direction. So thank you so much.
Just one thought, within the different pieces that you've got here, I think, I just want to keep pointing out like that live the North Star way. You know, that's what your, your shirt, your sweatshirt, the star, you know, with those core values, that allows it to be simple. But it's simple, not simplistic. And I do want, like when we say three years, part of your question is, is how deeply can you integrate it? If you look at some of these outcomes, what we're really talking about, you know, knowing how and when to ask for help, embracing adversity without whining, complaining, blaming. And the work that we do with college athletics, power four schools, we're doing a lot of work with parents. We're doing a lot of work with young people who aren't used to not starting as soon as they get there, being a good teammate on the bench. So part of what we're talking about here is one, needed for sport. It's needed by parents. It's needed by coaches. It's needed by the student athletes. And that's why when I say three years, a lot is going to happen in year one because of the rollout and the intentionality. But to get it all the depth and fiber, all the opportunities to have it really infiltrating all the places that you're talking about, that's when I say it's, it's a little bit longer vision. Hopefully all the tools are there to help you go as simply and as deeply as you want, as quickly, but also, you know, sort of as intentionally. I said slowly, I introduced that. I don't like the idea of moving slow. I do like the idea of moving intentionally, one, one opportunity at a time.
Which kind of ties into our next topic this evening, which is, I guess over the past month or so, there has been a committee looking to brand CNS and update unify logos, color. We've had a few different versions out there. And as we're heading in with the renovations, we have worked with Eric Rickabom Company. And he gave us some new ideas and as the, the timing is perfect as we have to get something down on the, the new gym floor. So we are presenting these tonight to see what you think. We would be given all of these, being able to utilize them for whatever area, T-shirt, but as you can see, the font, the color are, are correct. So the, there's a couple of different options for the gym floor. Joe, can you go back to, yeah. So we have the gym floor. I think it's two A. The, the only change on that is the font on the baseline.
The one thing I love about this, and I, and not a lot of people pick up on this and I, and I don't even know if like, because you didn't even mention this part, but I picked up on it was with the slanted one, if, if you look closely, the C is farther away to the N than the S is. And it, it represents Cicero, North Syracuse. And I think that is so cool. And like, just so subtle, but it's keeping our, our districts, you know, our, our values, our, our, who we are, you know? It's not just CNS, it's Cicero, North Syracuse. And I think that really reflects that and he did a very good job with that.
One other thing that was, is different from the current one that's used is there's only one star and it's the North Star. It's above the N. In, in our old logo, we have two, one on top, one on bottom. Yeah, we were looking at two B. Which basically has a straight across font.
Yeah. One thing about two B is the font, the block, it's different than the center court font. And when you go more like an italic, and then when you go back to two A, that font matches the center court, but, but it doesn't have to be the same, but it's just point O.
Any? Any questions, comments, concerns? All right. Well, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, one more presentation tonight. We have Mr. Irwin for facilities, giving us some updates on where all of our projects stand.
Good evening, everyone. I've got Bob here with me from Watchdog, our construction managers. Tim, thanks a lot for all the pressure. He already left, so. But, um, so obviously we've got some ambitious expectations for our, our new gym and locker rooms and for our new auditorium, which are underway at the high school. Hopefully we'll, we'll meet all of your lofty goals for those new spaces. They're coming along very, very well. I'll just give you a patient up and we'll show you a few pictures too. Go ahead to the next slide, Joe. Other clear. All right. So phase one at the high school, if we don't recall, is all the HVAC work in the classroom. So all of these units are up and running for the start of school. We're working on commissioning these new systems. We're working on final tweaks to the control systems. But all of them are in place and operational, delivering nice, cool air to all our classrooms. And we're currently working on in phase two, the boiler plant, which will be up and running before October 15th, to be able to provide heat to all the spaces as well. The new gym, you can see it's almost done. We're, we're anticipating a decision on the gym floor here from the athletics department and the building. Kristen's still here. We're, we're waiting on that answer. We have the, the gym wall pads are now in place. The bleachers are in place. The space is really ready for the floor to be finished and for the graphics to go up. Unfortunately, this beautiful new gym that's going to be done is surrounded by construction. Okay. So let's not get our hopes up about getting in there too awful soon. Over the next few months, we'll be looking very carefully at where the work around it is going to be in construction completion. And we'll be working very carefully at egress from that space so that in an emergency, we can get out properly. It's very likely that we'll be reducing occupancy levels for the gym if we do put it to use before the other spaces are a hundred percent. Because we do have the pool construction going on on the back. That'll be starting up soon. We do have some site work on the side of the building and we're looking at our options to create a safe exit path to make sure we can get everybody in and out. You can see the auditorium is dried in. All that green board that you see in that lower right-hand picture and on the lower left-hand picture, that's all the siding board that's gone in place. That'll all get covered up here soon with some, some cosmetic work, new panels and whatnot, and a nice new logo on that as well. That's kind of where we're at right now. Obviously there's a lot of work to do in the auditorium. The lobby in between has a few months worth of work. So by, by Thanksgiving, Christmas time, we should be in really good shape in the lobby as well. Right? Lakeshore Elementary. Okay. If you driven by, it is well underway. The site is torn up. We've got preparations for paving. We've got preparations for some, some new electrical services. We've got preparations for new playgrounds going on outside. In the building, we're in the middle midst of abatement. We're getting rid of all the asbestos. They should be finishing up the first floor this week, Bob. And then they'll be moving down to the crawl space to get the balance. So abatement's going very well. The same contractor is going to be doing the demo work. So we don't have to wait for somebody else to mobilize. Once abatement's complete, they'll carry forward the rest of the demo work. Some other projects that we've got going on. Let's see here. So Main Street is the first one up there on the list. It's kind of hidden up on top there. We have a new roof going on at Main Street right now. That roof is in place and we're working on trim on the edges of the building. All that metal trim has got to go into place. And over one of our bricks this winter, we'll be working on the new plumbing work that needs to go to replace an old galvanized main in the building. St. Margaret's obviously is done. We got our certificate of occupancy the day the teachers arrived. So we were literally down to the wire. We did have a couple of challenges with the PA system. We had staff in over the weekend working on that and we are down to about three spaces, including the gym, that we're still working on making modifications to the PA system, but our electrician was there today, making progress on that. So we're in good shape there. The junior high has a new fire alarm system being installed. That is also progressing very, very well. Contractors are moving right along in that building, pulling wires and trimming out devices. That entire new system will get installed before we take the old system offline. Okay. So there'll be no interruption to service, but we, we will be working in the building throughout the school year to get that job done.
Okay. During school hours or second shift?
Second shift, but it overlaps slightly. Okay. Looking ahead, the pool project has been approved by state ed. And we're looking carefully right now at an opportunity for a co-op purchase for part of the work to take advantage of having our general contractor already on site and to get the pool equipment all in line so that there's, there's no delays come spring when we want to break ground on the balance of the facility. So we're looking carefully at that with our attorneys. We're waiting on a recommendation to proceed with that. If that doesn't happen, we'll be breaking ground in the spring. Okay. Very, very soon, hopefully our next board meeting will be meeting to accept the, the final amendments to the EPC project scope that were requested by state ed. We've had a little over a $500,000 increase in the scope. We added some rooftop units to the junior high and a few other minor tweaks to that scope. Otherwise it's pretty much what we asked for. They did push back on some demand control ventilation and a few other measures that we were exploring. Said no to a few spaces, said yes to other spaces. So that we expect we'll get approval for in the next couple of months. And then we'll, we'll really plan to kick off the bulk of that work over the summer. Safety and security project is also currently at SED. We do expect to get that back maybe late October or sometime in November with approval. Again, most of that work will start over the summer. You may see some of it start in the spring. Safety and security is in about eight of our buildings. For Gillette Road, we packaged safety and securities work in the future project where we're doing HVAC and we're doing the athletic field. That work is still in design. We're hoping to finish up that design work this fall and early winter and get that submitted before January. And some pretty pictures for the future for you. So the top are some renderings of what the pool may look like. And the lower section in the security project for the junior high, we do have all of the restrooms being renovated. All the gang restrooms on all three levels are going to get renovated. These will be individual full height doors or toilet rooms. And you can see in the common area will be your wash bays. And you can see in the common area will be your wash bays. So that there's a lot more supervision, this is similar to what we do in a couple other buildings across the district. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, moving on to the public comments, we don't have any this evening, but as always, we welcome anyone who'd like to speak before the board to sign up. Board of Education Committee reports, Mr. Thorne.
Thank you, we have chosen to postpone or actually cancel September's Policy Committee meeting in favor of doing superintendent interviews. Pick that up again in October.
Crabtree.
Legislative Committee, our first meeting will be October 2nd. I will be out of town, so I've asked Matt Herman to lead that committee. Just a few things I want to bring up, being legislative. As you know, there's the Blue Ribbit Ambassador Forum that is coming up tomorrow night, Zoom, 6:00 to 7:30. Wednesday, it will be at our BOSI's from 6:00 to 7:30, and on 25th at Cortlandville. This is about the new graduation requirements, this is a huge undertaking by the State Ed Department. So if you want your opinion, please attend one of these meetings. I mean, just to let you know that the Board of Regents meets every month, they met today, and they'll meet tomorrow. And Don will be excited because they're looking at the foundation aid formula. Another topic that has been mentioned is regionalization, this is coming, regionalization, so if you want to know about it, check on it. Thank you. Voting is coming up for the national elections, state elections. There is a new way that you can vote. If you're out of town or for business, whatever, you can mail an absentee. But this year, anyone, anyone can do a mail ballot. On the table in the back, this goes to the audience, if you do not want to come on Election Day and vote, you can vote by mail. Anyone can, over 18. It's very easy to complete the form, you must send it in or deliver it to the Board of Elections. I am doing it, I expect my ballot will be within two weeks. They're coming early, so within two weeks, I will get the ballot, and then I won't have to worry on Election Day. So if you're one of those that don't want to stand in line, because I see lines, and you might want to do this, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Comments, Mr. Shido.
Yeah, so this Wednesday is September 11th, and we've asked our school buildings and administrators and staff to hold a moment of silence at 8:46 a.m., which was when the first World Trade Center was hit by an airplane. And it's something that, you know, everyone talks about, that you should never forget. All the victims from 9/11 and all that were affected by it, which even many of us were in some way. So that will be on Wednesday, 9/11. Also on Wednesday, I'm going to be attending Chief School Administrators Meeting at BOSI's, and I actually put on the agenda to talk about weapons detection systems, which I know has been talked about within the district before, but continuing that conversation and to get some information from districts who already have them in place. Especially since, you know, there's, again, another shooting, which is just unfathomable, you know, to have that going on in schools. So it's something we'll continue to look at. Matt Cook from OC and BOSI's has asked myself and Chris and Don to look at putting some superintendent search focus groups together. So the board and Matt can talk with them and receive feedback on the traits and qualities of our community we'd like to see in the next superintendent of schools. We'll be putting those groups together over this next week and get those to Matt. And then he can begin that process along with all of you. I'll be attending the New York State Council of Schools Superintendent's Conference from September 22nd to September 24th in Saratoga. And I'll bring information back from that, looking forward to attending workshops and many of the sessions there. And I will not be at the September 23rd Board of Ed meeting, which Mike and Xavier and I have already talked about. Also, Spirit Week at the high school is September 23rd to the 27th. And homecoming is on September 27th, and that evening, our football team plays West Tennessee. So big week there. And then on September 26th, John and I are going to be working together, but we have John Carrula and I, myself, and AFT, NISA. So it's American Federation of Teachers and the New York State United Teachers Unions are going to be holding a Micron meeting today at the high school. And we're working on getting the details for that, so that's Thursday, September 26th. And I'll continue to get more information out to the board as it comes in, but it is actually going to be during the school day. We're looking at having some local politicians, some leaders from NISA and AFT. And there will be many other individuals there also, we're looking at possibly up to 60 people, right, John? Any other information, John, or nothing at this point? Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Board of Ed comments. I just want to welcome everyone back, I've heard a lot of good feedback from folks from the first week of school. I know it's always hectic coming back, so just want to welcome all of our staff and students back and hope to have a great year. Student Board comments, if you have anything.
All right, hello, I was going to say the same thing, like, it's very hectic the first three days. And I just wanted to thank all the administrators for like, it's very like busy, especially with the influx of new kids coming in the building. And I just wanted to thank the administrators, especially our new one, Mr. Villeneuve. I had like a mini conversation with him, and I always see him interacting with students, and I think that's very good to do with students. And I wanted to acknowledge what we did on the first day of school, which was the senior sunrise, which happened on the CNS turf. Unfortunately, I was not there because I don't have a car. But I saw many pictures on social media, and it was just like beautiful gathering of the Class 2025, and it really showed the North Star pride, and I wanted to thank our class advisors, Mrs. Leach and Mrs. Crandall, for working with student leaders, putting that together. And in my notes, I also have an acknowledgement of Maintenance Operations Appreciation Week and just saying that, you know, upkeeping a school that serves so many students and so many staff is definitely like a lot of work. And it takes a lot of, takes a lot of pride to really keep this, keep that huge building, just like, you know, ever-changing and ever-getting better, especially with, you know, the new enhancement of our culture that I've seen and heard about here today, so that's mostly what I want to talk about.
Thank you.
Mike, may I say something also? To piggyback Ezra. You know, I was able to get into all the buildings over the first four days, so I've been in all 11 buildings. And I was impressed by the condition of the buildings and then just by walking through the building, you know, once you, you know, I was in a lot of smaller districts, but once you walk into a school building, the systems are the same everywhere. And I was really impressed by the teachers, you know, all the staff throughout the building and the students and what I saw. And I walked in and out of classrooms, and you saw teaching and learning, and students were very respectful and kind. And so was the staff, so it was very welcoming, so just wanted to make a comment about that. And that's the fun part of the job, is walking in and out of classrooms and seeing teaching and learning happening throughout the day. And then had great interactions with administrators and Miss Hill, and I walked around the high school. And it was that way in each building, I toured with the administrative teams, and it was great, so thank you, everyone.
Moving on to some routine action items, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from August 19th. Mr. Crabtree, second, Beth, any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. I'd like to place B and C to gather the consideration of classification of students. Do I have a motion to take those as a group? Xavier, Mark, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. And Declaration of Marketable and Non-Marketable Surplus. Get some musical instruments, among other things, on here. I have a motion to take that, Beth, can I?
Again, marketable, non-marketable surplus is my thing these days, I guess. Yeah, a lot of musical instruments, a lot of guitars, I just wondered, when they're not, why are they non-marketable? They just...
Tom?
I don't know if you can answer that, but, okay, I just wondered if what happens when something's marketable, I know we auction it or whatever, but when it's not marketable, they're damaged, okay? It just was an inordinate amount of them, I just was surprised, it's only... No, just curious, because I, for some reason, I'm obsessed with going through that list every two weeks. Thank you.
I just, yeah, I mean, the piggyback on that, maybe not marketable, but they're musical instruments, I don't know how bad a shape they got to be to trash them, but it'd be nice to be able to pass them along to districts that can't afford them, too, you know, I mean, that's, I don't know if we can do that. I know New York State doesn't do a lot of things, but...
That's my real question, once we determine it's not marketable, what are we allowed to do with it? Do we have to dispose of it? And that's a question we can answer later, I guess, I just wondered, what happens to those things if there's any value for anybody could we do?
I do know, and Don will find it out, but in where I work, I mean, they are really, have to be in bad, bad condition. Like, I had a worthless piano that I think got auctioned off for like a dollar or two. I mean, it's just, they're in like real bad condition if they are non-marketable. But Don will find out for sure.
Things as long as they possibly can. Okay, I'm sure of that, yeah. Well, thank you.
Want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, great. All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Discussion Action Items. First one we have tonight is the approval of the contract between the North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse Education Association for a period of July 1st through June, 2024 through June 30th of 2028. I just want to thank everybody involved that was part of this process. Always an interesting experience to go through and to see how it all unfolds, so I'm very happy to see that we reached an agreement. And I'd like, and I know he's not here, but Dan Bowles, I'd like to thank his involvement in this as well. So do I have a motion to accept that or to approve the contract? Xavier, second, from Beth, all those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Yes, please.
I should have done it when it was before, I just want to thank Don, I did read in the Friday Letter, it sounds like you got quite an aggressive agenda trying to get it wrapped up by the first payroll, which I know is really cumbersome, so I, you know, I hope you get to that goal, and if you don't, I hope there's understanding, because that's a lot of work, but thank you for doing that.
Next, we have scoreboard sponsorship, do I have a motion to approve the two fellowships, sponsorships before us? Beth, Mark, all those in favor?
Comments?
Comment, please.
I brought this up at the last board meeting. I'm hoping that thank you notes are sent, I know they're probably sent from here, but I would like the Athletic Department to thank these people for...
All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. And we have an acknowledgement of a gift, we have $1,000 for the boys' golf team from Upstate University Radiation Oncology, so do I have a motion to accept with gratitude that gift? Beth, Matt? That is unanimous, thank you. Have a resolution to increase financial reserves, Don, is there anything you want to mention about this? Do I have a motion for that? Matt? Amanda, and this is a roll call? Yes? I?
I.
Thank you very much. Before we move into personnel, I just want to make a couple of comments here, there is a retirement that we will be accepting tonight. He has another year with us until next June, but John Rice, the Director of Science and CTE, is retiring at the end of this school year. And I just wanted to publicly recognize him for his 33 years of service that he will have with this district. And I certainly look forward to working with him while we still have him for the next year. And we will be voting on two folks for tenure this evening, Nick Schultz, our Director of Math, and Jason Clark, our Director of Technology here, so I just want to congratulate you on this accomplishment. So moving into personnel, do we need an executive session before we move into A, B, or C? Hey, do I have a motion for instructional personnel report A? Paul? Beth, any questions? That's unanimous. Report Staff B, do I have a motion to place that before us? Mark, Amanda, any questions? Favor, that's unanimous. And Administrator Report C, do I have a motion for that, Mr. Crabtree? Beth?
I have some comments.
Questions, please.
I have some comments, of course. You're right, of course, let's start with the tenure people. Nick Schultz, I was on the interviewing committee that helped hire him, and he has been a outstanding administrator. He cares about the school district, he has really developed staff development from Rochester, University of Rochester, he's done a really good job. Math, difficult subject for many students, I don't know if it's for you, but it's a very difficult subject. It isn't rote anymore, it's problem-solving and thinking out of the box, and he thinks out of the box. So when we vote on it, congratulations. Other persons in the audience, I've known Jason before, you people know him, because at BOSI's, he was a big asset of BOSI's for technology. And I know, Mike, you were on that interviewing committee, I believe, and you selected a really bright person who has taken technology beyond, and thank you for what you have done. But the sad news is the third one you're going to vote on, that's John Rice. I've known John Rice most of the 33 years that he's been here, being a science person and a math person. I worked closely as a classroom teacher on the science committee with him. He cares so much, he lives in this district, his two kids went through his district, his wife is still working at the North Syracuse Junior High. He puts more time, he will still be down there in that office at 6 o'clock at night during the week. Really is an outstanding administrator, he called me up the other night because he knows how, we're friends, too. And what I've seen the last couple of years is his dedication to CTE. Kristen knows in the audience, not everyone's going to go to college, not everyone is academically strong. And we, with Micron coming, we need to look at CTE, we need to look at the trades. And he came to open houses with me at BOSI's, he took the tour when Dan Bowles was here. Will be taking a tour to BOSI's along with the board, just an outstanding person. And I'm glad he told us ahead of time, because we'll have a great year with him to move us forward. For so many things, he is a director that really cares, thank you.
Hey, all those in favor? That's unanimous, and Jason? That's unanimous. And Jason, congratulations. Next, I would like to make a motion to move a new executive session for the purpose of discussing one negotiation item with no action to follow and three personnel items with no action to follow. Can I have a second? Questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. And can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Herman, Dr. Kramer, all those in favor? That's unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you.